Vote. Jim, do you vote?
Yeah.
For it. Thank you.
Okay, next, the court reports and police reports, you have them all weekend to look at. Do you have any questions? We can ask the police chief about it.
Deborah and I keep coming back with the same thing. Uh, what page this is on here? But, second twenty-eight fifteen. And on down to there, and then there's three oh six thirteen. All these have been dismissed. And I counted this, and I came up with a total of a hundred and fifty-eight people on here that has not paid. Looks to me like that's an awful lot. I've, I've, I've asked about this before, and, and it seems like that, that I'm not getting a something done, or something's not getting done somewhere.
I think they said the last time you did, if I'm not mistaken, and someone can correct me, that it comes to the judge.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, if you or I go to the judge or anybody else, sometime rather we have to pay, we have to pay our, our, our due, don't we?
I, I totally agree, but I think that goes back to the judge and what you can be doing. Cause I did see a lot of dismissed, and I was gonna ask-
And I counted these, and I've got a total of a hundred and fifty-eight people on here. And, you know, it just seems to me like that's an awful lot.
Rick, can you help us with this?
Well, I, I know there's a lot on the list, but that doesn't mean they're not ever gonna pay. He'll carry that over from, from one docket to the next month to the next month, if he gives somebody like six months to pay, or if he gives them three months to pay. So they're gonna show up on the docket until their final payment's made, or until they, uh, until their time is up. Uh, but once, now, the ones that say dismissed, those are dismissed. But the rest of them, they're still alive and still working. And he, you know, we might have a hundred and fifty people on this list, and two hundred people come to the next, you know, be on there next time, and you'll lose a hundred and fifty, and a hundred and fifty more will take their place. It's a continuous thing, but they, if they're on the docket and it doesn't say dismissed, they are still there to pay. They just haven't paid it off yet, so we're gonna keep them on that list until they are paid up.
In other words, this sheet over here shows that it's current, so by that I, I take it that it is current then, is that correct?
That's right, it, it, it's current, it, it's still alive. And, and different people hit different times depending on the fine, or how many times they've been in front of the judge, that sort of thing. So, there may be somebody that, that got a two hundred dollar fine, and the judge said, "I'll give you four months to pay it." And until they get it paid, they're gonna continue to be on this list. And then, once it's paid off, they'll come off with it.
So, ma'am, does it matter how many times they're repeated, it's still active?
It's still active, unless it says dismissed. Now, if it says dismissed, then it, then the court's done with it.
I have a question.
Okay, Jim?
If, if the license is revoked, how can it be dismissed? I mean, I, see, I don't understand those things.
Well, it, there's a variety of reasons. It could, it could be, uh, another day pled guilty to another charge. There may be more than one charge on one person, and you might have a revoked license, or no, no insurance, speeding. And they may dismiss a couple of them, and then put a bigger fine on the one that they have left. It's, it's just a means for them to negotiate.
I would think that having no license would be worse, if you had no driver's license.
Normally, if a person's, uh, pleads guilty and is, is ready to pay their fine, or willing to pay their fine, they'll let them plead for the lesser of the offenses than dismissed others. If they're a faulty person, it'd be just the opposite.
Well, there's one on, uh, down here about possession of illegal smoking product. This one, it said a two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Is that, is that like that K two? I think we may have asked that before.
No, I, I don't know the particulars of that case, so...
You know, off the rest of-
I don't know the case, or the why would you drop this on the K two? That has a particular action to do with it.
Now, that's been taken out of the shores here, hasn't it?
Yes, it's part of the, it's part of the process.
There's one here, and this is the one that really got attention in my eye, on December first of two thousand and twelve. Driving while intoxicated, failed to drive on right of roadway, uh, driver's license revoked, failed to prove your insurance, resisting arrest, failure to obey command of police officer, assault. All of these was wrote by the same officer, and every one of those was dismissed. Is there, I mean, is there a reason for that? Because it don't look like, it looks like that was all one person?
I'm sure, I'm sure it was, and there was probably a singular, uh, case that they pled guilty to and paid a, got off the fine for, and-
Well, I hope so.
That's why we hired that judge.
Ray, just also remind me, some of these on those type of situations, show up here, but they've been referred to the county to, for, to state charges on.
If the case is serious enough that we-
So, something like that, probably-
If the case is serious enough that we feel that our finding system isn't sufficient to punish the offender, we can refer those more serious cases to the county prosecutor for prosecution, but we have to dismiss that action here before the county prosecutor can take up the case.
Okay.
I don't know the particulars of that case, the justice, the handles of those, but if you see some very serious things being dismissed, more likely than not, there's either a technical defect with the file, or is it referred to the Jason here, since it's a legal process at county level? Or he can jail them, and, and enforce more, uh, more enhanced fines than things that we can't do at city level.
Okay, well, that's just one that really stuck out to me, because it was several, you know, failure to obey the command of police officers, resisting arrest, and all that, just kinda-
The, the resisting arrest and assault, I mean, unless, I, again, without looking at the file,
Right.
Um, it's, it's very likely that that guy referred to Jason for prosecution, that there's other more serious things that he can do that we can't do at the city level.
Okay.
Okay, no more questions, we'll move on to bill two thousand thirteen dash zero six. Rick, you wanna bring us up?
Good, kind of discussed at the last meeting, it's, uh, raising the base rate.
Okay, we need a motion to proceed with the first reading on this bill. We'll make that motion. Second, all in favor?
Okay, it's an ordinance submitted section fifteen-three, subsection one of article one, the code ordinances that relates to sewer rates by repeating section fifteen-three-one, and acting with their own new section fifteen-three-one.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the first reading on this bill.
Thank the nation.
Second.
My second.
Any question?
Mr. Mayor? Um, the first one thousand gallons of water used, it was, did I hear it wrong last meeting? Is, was it supposed to be like three fifty? Is this-
Three fifty increase.
Increase, right.
It's one fifty per gallon.
Okay, five dollars total, okay, I'm sorry, all right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bartlett, how you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just before we vote, you're going this last time. The vote stopped or something, and I asked Rick to make that clear, how much this was gonna be? And he said three fifty.
Three fifty, Rachel.
No, he didn't say that, he said three fifty. I said, "How much is this gonna be?" Total. I didn't ask total, I said, "How much is this gonna be?" He said, "Three fifty," and then it comes about five dollars.
It's a three fifty increase.
He didn't say increase, so he said three fifty. I said, "How much is this gonna be before we vote? How much is this gonna be?" And I, also, it's not minutes. This is the third council meeting I've been to, and every one of these, there's been something wrong in the minutes.
Well, I don't know whether you guys realize this, but the only thing that has to be in the minutes-
It is in the minutes.
Is, is something we voted on, and who voted, and how they voted, that's the only thing that has to be in the minutes. Everything else is, they put in there just to help out.
I wanna, I wanna say, sorry, Rick, but on the third page of this, the very bottom of it says, "He suggested raising the base rate by three fifty for a total base amount of five dollars monthly." It's right there.
Yeah, it says the current sewer rate is a dollar fifty, so...
Okay, any more questions? If not, Mr. Bartlett, how you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, uh, this will be done by ordinance, so I'm allowed to vote, so I'll vote, and we go ahead and do it. Okay, now we're getting motion, go with the second reading.
I think the motion go with the second reading.
Second? Okay. All in favor? Okay, this is holding hands of high society. Okay. All opposed? Okay, now, can I break the tie on this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll vote, we go ahead. Rick, you wanna give the second reading?
An ordinance submitted section fifteen-three-one, article one of the code ordinances that relates to sewer rates by repeating section fifteen-three-one, and acting with their own new section fifteen-three-one.
Okay, we have a motion to accept, decide a reading?
Motion to accept.
Second? Okay, have you vote?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Okay, I'll break the tie for yes. Okay, next, we have the Ethics Commission report, say your turn.
Give you these. Copy that we got back from the state for your results. Those are the answers, uh, from the Ethics Commission, council, as to their findings with the, uh, on the ethics complaint, just while we're in this.
Okay, Ray, boy, I read this, we found no, no false law.
Yes, the, the, our office coordinated response to the complaints, and a series of complaints that were filed by local citizen, and the, the Ethics Commission found that the, his allegations basically were meritless, and dismissed them all summarily.
So, Rick, we got any idea how that's this little false complaint cost us?
Hmm, thirty-six hundred so far, but I don't know if I've got all the bills in my head.
So, that fires about thirty-six hundred dollars on false complaint, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so these false complaints starting that up a little bit on the, our attorney fees. Okay. Okay, next. Stormwater runoff, and Ms. Roberts, she didn't show up tonight?
No, she asked if we postponed this until next meeting, and she plans to show up for the next meeting.
Okay, next, primary seatbelt law, Courtney Glenn.
Basically, Courtney Glenn, I'm from my county health department, I also represent Southeast Coalition for Library Safety. Part of my goal being here tonight is to try to see if we can switch our ordinance in the city from a secondary ordinance to a primary ordinance, on seatbelts, which basically means that an officer would have the right to pull somebody over who are only noticing that they don't have their seatbelt on. Right now, in the state as a whole, it is a secondary ordinance. Um, there's thirty different cities that have now gone to primary, and one county, I think it was last week, that Kansas City actually went to the primary ordinance. Seatbelts save lives, and it's important, if we can enforce more people wearing them, we can ensure that more people in right town will save lives. Um, I don't know if you have questions for me, or if there's a lot of different statistics in this, um, you know, that I can deal with? But, plain and simple, seatbelts save lives. It also shows that the more adults that wear their seatbelts, the more children that are restrained. Part of my job at the health department is I'm a child restraint technician, so every week I teach parents how to use seatbelts, or, sorry, how to use child restraints, and nine times in a town, I have to ask those parents when they're pulling out, "Please put your seatbelts on." If we can get these moms and these dads and these grandparents to wear their seatbelts, these kids are gonna in turn grow up and wear their seatbelts, and there's gonna be a lot less death. So I'm asking for the council to change it from secondary to primary.
I have a question. Why should we change something the state says that they're not gonna change? I, I called my state rep Sunday, and I asked him if it's gonna change, and he said, "No," said, "There's no support, there's too much opposition, and he says a controversy would be too bad for changing."
I do believe that eventually it will be changed, I'm not saying tomorrow, but I've seen that-
He, he said that right now, it's no interest in it.
Right, I'm saying that enough cities and enough counties go to it, I do believe that it will change. And, and I know that there are line names areas on, where you're seatbelt. It's already a law, it's already a law to wear your seatbelt. This is the only violation out of five hundred and twenty-five, I believe, that is secondary. I don't know why, I honestly can't answer that. But I do believe that I can go to cities, and I can present this, and I can get the cities to change, and we're gonna save people's lives in Mountain Grove.
Well, I'm just gonna say upfront that, uh, I'll oppose it to, because, hey, this gonna be a big controversy. I mean, you council members ain't seen nothing yet, what these people's gonna say, "Hey, you're taking my rights away from me." Uh, it's already against the law, they can already stop him. And, my, my thing is, if a police officer gives me a ticket today for not wearing a seatbelt, and I see that same police officer driving around without his seatbelt on, we find a problem.
Right, and I do try to educate all of our officers about they shouldn't even be wearing their seatbelts. I try to educate every individual that I come across, but I do highly suggest it to our law enforcement. They're out there representing us, and they need to be doing the same things.
But another thing bothered me is, the other day, you said, "Well, this will give the police officers a chance to stop somebody that they wanna stop, but they don't have a reason to." My theory is, if a police officer ain't got any reason to stop me, they need to just quit harassing me and leave me alone.
Right, and on that statement, I did make that statement, and where I was going with that is, if there's a no drug dealer in town, and they have suspicion that they may have drugs on, and they're not wearing their seatbelt, they can stop that person solely for not wearing their seatbelt.
But you may stop them for other, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, if you know a drug dealer in town, and you get behind him, most likely, are you gonna find a reason to pull him over? I mean, that's just-
Right, and I, and I'm not law enforcement, so I do not know, but-
But, what I say about this, this is just gonna be a reason for the police department to pull people over. I mean, who's to say that they're not gonna sit out here, they use hardware, when these people comes in from the county, which they're not allowed to have to do a primary?
Hartfield did go into ordinance a year ago on this, I did speak in front of them. What they have done to educate people that are coming through their city, that are not from their city, is now they have signs posted at each end of the city that says that the city is, does have the ordinance primary law.
The one I'm afraid of is, there's nothing that picks me off anywhere, some of these little cities has got these speed traps. It is to say that we're not gonna have a seatbelt trap.
Right.
People be afraid to come to town because of the seatbelt law.
Or people are gonna start wearing their seatbelts, and they're gonna start saving lives. I mean, you're gonna make somebody mad, obviously.
Hey, I guarantee you, I'm gonna be on record, as opposed to counseling both the way they want to, but when it comes down, I'm gonna say I'm clear. Jim?
Deborah? Back to this sheet here, here's two on the front page of, uh, failed to wear seatbelts. Okay, how come they got stopped, can you not, the officers can't just stop them because they're-
Well, they probably stopped them for something else.
Well, then, if I didn't, did they not get charged for anything else besides just the seatbelt law?
Well, I went through there, there's thirty-some seatbelt violations on this last court pocket.
Do you see what I'm saying, though?
But they had to have the reason to stop them, or they just couldn't give them the ticket.
Well, I don't know, but I think, and Danny, I hope you're listening to me, because I live across the street from her. But I hope that we can maybe get some more traps set around Mountain Grove here to stop some of these people. And if I need stopping for something that I've done, I want you to stop me. But, I want you to stop the next person too, if he's done something wrong. I don't wanna be partial. I mean, I, I think that's no more than fair, and I think that would, well, I mean, you, yous can laugh at it if you want, but, you know, listen, I've been around this town, and I, and I can tell you, some things are going on around here. And I think, I think if, like yous over there at the church that time, and yous were stopping everybody. If you do more of that, I think, I think we get some of them in a trap, and I think this town would kinda straighten up some. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But my wife and I was at Sonic Sunday, watching traffic on ninety-five. Seventy percent of the people come by, they're not ever seatbelt on. So, if, if we try to-
I think that one way too untrying, and not interrupt you at all, is to be out there and educate people, which is what I've been trying to do with schools, I've been going to basketball games, and having a ride-alive night, handing out T-shirts, and talking to the parents about this. I think that one of the main focuses on starting something like this is that you do have to get out there, and you have to educate people that, "Hey, this is changing, and this is what's gonna happen," and, and that it's for a good thing. It's to save teenagers' lives, it's to save grandparents' lives. It's not about being a cop and just being able to pull somebody over and give them the ticket, it's about saving somebody's life.
Yes.
Um, some of you may know, some of you don't, I'm a paramedic, I work for a little ambulance service, and I've been in it for about twenty-five or thirty years. And I have grown up on countless accidents where people have been thrown from vehicles, and critically injured, or deceased at the scene, because they didn't have a seatbelt on. Cause once that vehicle starts rolling over, you go out a window, you go outside a window, you go out the back window, and nine times out of ten, you're, you're rolled over by the vehicle. And if you're not dead when you hit the pavement, you will be by the time the vehicle rolls over on you. Okay? I've been to a lot of accidents that have happened that way with teenagers, and it has just sickened me every time, because they did not have a seatbelt on. Now, I'm not saying they wouldn't be hurt, but they wouldn't be dead, I guarantee it. And what really sickens me and hurts me the most is when parents, and brothers and sisters show up on scene with this deceased boy out here in the roadway, or waiting for a corner. That is what I want to prevent, and that's what she's trying to prevent. There's something going through like that if you lose a son or a daughter in an accident, just by stupidity. Now, if we enforce this, and I'm a hundred percent for it, if you get people to use this in town, more than likely, they're gonna keep it on whenever they go out here on the highway. That's where you're critical in, you can get critically injured at a speed of thirty miles an hour without a seatbelt. You go into that steering wheel, you go up into that, that's, that, uh, windshield, and you got head injury, then you end up in the hospital. At thirty miles an hour. And I'm totally, totally am for this. And I have preached to my kids about it, and they don't get in the car and start with that seatbelt on. It just habits, you know? And if they, you know, if they use it in town, they're gonna use it out here on highways. You know, that's for all people, and just for our kids to die. If this saves one person in this town, it's worth it. I'm all for it, Deborah, I know how you feel. If you had not been there on scenes of accident, with an eighteen or nineteen-year-old boy laying out here in the middle of the road, dead.
Well, the thing of it is, it's already the law.
I, I know, but we wanna make it a primary thing, but, and I'm not saying Danny has to go out and just watch for everybody looking, you know? Just keep an eye out, maybe let one or two go in and stop one, but if we start putting signs out, then people's gonna start getting the word, and-
The only thing I'm saying, hey, the public's gonna come back on you guys.
That's fine, let them come back on us. They can call me all they want, and I'll tell them it's exactly what I'm saying now. It's gonna save lives.
But a lot, a lot of them says, "Hey, you violated my right to make this decision."
Well...
I would have to agree with you, Deborah, if one more of our rights took away.
And, and the thing of it is, guys-
Well, you're not teaching our young kids anything good.
Okay, but you know, we're gonna protect people that don't have an assist, that are buckled up. But what about these guys that smoke, and we're losing thousands of people by cancer, and we gotta stop selling cigarettes?
No, no, I'd like to, I'd like to. But at least we-
Same situation.
Same situation.
But at least we have something to do with, I mean, we have something to work with, with this, with this.
There's something else I do. The economy's really bad, and everybody's fighting for that little sales tax that we get, all of it. And it'd be just like down in Alabama. We got, we're, we wouldn't even stop in Alabama, it's not, we had full fuel before we got Alabama, and we go across the state line, and we didn't buy nothing out of that, because every time you turn around, every billboard is signed, everything, it was a cop sitting here behind it, trying to figure out some way to give you tickets and get you stopped. And if you, if you start making way to seatbelts, and giving fines for seatbelts, they won't be coming up here. Cause we're a rural town, and, and we got a big drawing area, and they, they can go anywhere in my shop.
If the state says that you can run seventy-five miles an hour out on the highway, then we're not gonna create a primary law. Uh, you know, why should we do it on thirty, forty miles an hour? But, I mean, it's up to you guys, you guys can make a motion, you can go.
Mr. Mayor? We just thought, before we vote, or if we do vote on this, we have to remember that driving is not a right, it's a privilege. So there's no rights taken away when you're wearing a seatbelt.
Are there any statistics on the age group that wears their seatbelts, do the younger ones, or middle aged?
People that age group in here.
I know, I was raised, we didn't have a seatbelt, you know, stood up by, stood up by our parents in, in the seat, and didn't have any child-
Run in the back of the truck.
Yeah, rode the back of the truck, and I think these older people are gonna be harder to convince.
Right, I do know that, that-
That's it, they don't wanna get a ticket, they really seatbelt.
So I'm sure that, you know, they're not, generation.
I see, and, and I'm glad that you threw that up, Mike, but I have to disagree, because I was in a horrible car wreck, and if any of us would've been wearing our seatbelts, it would've killed us all.
Well-
And I, and I know, it's, and to me, that's, and, and I'm one of those people that, you know, if it's your time, it's your time, and, and it's horrible, I have teenagers at home, and they wear their seatbelts. You know, and I wear my seatbelts whenever I get to the highway, but I will not lie, whenever I'm in the city of Woods and Mountain Grove, I'm not wearing my seatbelts. And I, and I can probably tell you that there's several officers that don't wear theirs either, in Woods and, correct me if I'm wrong, let's go.
Danny?
Speed me underneath the sun.
I, I just, in my line of work, I've just seen a lot-
And, and I bet you have, I, I'm not disagreeing.
I'm really strong about it. I understand your feeling, but there isn't that many people that I cut out of vehicles that are definitely wearing seatbelts.
Well, and, and like I said, I mean, you've seen, you've seen one side, I've seen another, it's, it's everybody's opinion, but-
Right.
I just, you know, out on the highway, it is, if you're gonna get pulled over, you can get pulled over. They, they wrote several tickets in here for not using their seatbelt.
Right.
To me, that's, they're doing their job, and why put anymore on the police officers? I mean, no offense, I'd rather them be busting someone for drugs than, oh, we got another person that's wearing their seatbelt, and we got another drug.
I don't want them to go out and just particularly watch, or profile for people that are not wearing their seatbelts.
But that's what this law is stating.
So, I want people to know that, that if there's an ordinance against it, then they're gonna wear it.
Well, there's an ordinance either way against it, this is just saying it's gonna be-
It's a primary, right, they don't have to wear the seatbelts.
I think we need to leave it up to the state, what I think.
That's what I think, if the state-
I don't think we should get mixed up in this. I think it should be at state level, and when the state makes it mandatory, so enforce the law, until the state does. Work with what we got, and I, and I wear my seatbelt the majority of the time.
You're supposed to wear it all, though.
Jim, I'm gonna catch you not wearing yours, that's my primary goal, catch you not wearing yours.
It's just hard when you're going long here, and you go at half o'clock, and, and you have the public-
Okay, we need somebody to make a motion. Yeah, your name?
I say no.
I make, I make, I make, you want a motion for me?
What?
I make a motion that we let the state have it.
I second that.
I vote second, all in favor?
This is a very online.
No. You have to vote, don't you?
No.
This is, this is an ordinance, and it hasn't changed, I think of it, it's four votes, so...
I think some needs to be voted, usually she's there.
Yeah, hey, I, I'm like Bruce, I think the state, if the state comes down and says, "Hey, you can do it," I agree a hundred percent. But for this little area right here, and all these people coming in from outside?
That's what I think, but if it's too big a controversy for the state to handle-
It is.
It's, it's a way too big controversy.
My rep said, he said, "It's too big a controversy, and it's too much opposition, and it's not that much support for the fact." Thank you.
Okay, and we need a motion to pay the bills. Give me the motion to pay the bills. Second?
I'll say it.
Any questions?
I got a question. Could we have a copy of these bills? Did they make a copy? Didn't build another one in the bills? It's kind of hard to, we'd love, we'd love to let you look at them, but to make a copy, everybody's gonna be in a nightmare.
There's, how many bills in a motion? I used to follow them, what are you, you know, my numbers?
I'm just, I'm just going on the experience that I had when I was in businesses and stuff. And I had an employee that dropped, he'd come in and said, hey, I spent ten dollars over here. I said, what is a bill? You got a bill, I'll pay you. If you don't, I don't pay you. And when I was in truck business, when I was, I had.
I understand that, let me, and again, more than happy to share with you and let you come and look at them anytime you want. But I just think it'd be overwhelming to have to make copies and send out. The, uh, the way we do this, if somebody's gonna buy something, if we have an account set up with someone, I'm gonna use the O'Reilly's as an example, because we do a lot of business there. Uh, they get a purchase order, uh, from the receptionist, and they tell her, here's what we're going after to buy, and here's what it costs, and, and they sign the purchase order, and whoever takes the purchase order signs it. Then when the bill comes in, it's checked by the department head at wherever it's spent. He checks it to make sure that that was a legitimate bill, and, and then it's sent to me to review them all. And, uh, and the bills that you all are approving, uh, by law, are the ones that are over five hundred dollars, okay? And, um, but we have a lot of twelve-dollar and ten-dollar and, you know, twenty-three-dollar and every amount imaginable. If, if it's at all possible for you to come and look at them, I'm more than happy to share them with you. And if you insist on making copies of the bill, I'm just saying it's gonna take more office time and a lot of, a lot of effort to do that. We have cross-references in place.
If there is, you're welcome to come in and look at it.
I have a question on some of the bills. The first Bank of America, seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents, Summit Gas Building, what is that?
That's interesting, Summit Gas Building. We, we own that building.
Okay, is it, they're still there though, right?
Oh, yeah. And we, we make, uh, the payments, and they pay us from the equals payment, so we don't have to even.
That's what I assumed, but I wasn't for sure. And then, um, okay, Hunter Oil was still buying gas from Hunter Oil?
Right now, we are, yes, and we're still trying to clear out a better way to do that.
Okay, uh, let's see. Bank, let's see, I don't know. I guess that was all just time. Yeah, a corner law is quite a bit higher. And what does the AMC mean there? A corner law, no public payer.
Oh, A, AMC, that's the law's super involvement.
Okay, ADN, is that the?
Oh, they're just saying it coming out of the administration. That's the bottom line.
Okay.
Any more questions? If not, all in favor, pay the bills.
Did we get the money?
Oh, yeah. We need a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?